Mr. Sextrow.
Here.
Ms. McDaniel, she's not here. Mr. Footoff.
Here.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Here.
Mr. Burke.
Here.
And Mr. Albrecht.
Here.
Okay, we're gonna go to the consent calendar first, and the first report is the Finance Committee.
We're gonna do.
You're on.[1022.01][1022.01](Laughter).
What's the wait?
We should approve the minutes first. The minutes of the last meeting have been previously sent. Are there any additions, corrections, or changes? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextrow.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Footoff.
Yes.
Now, Mr. Albrecht, if you will give us the finance report, we'd appreciate it.
Had another fantastic month in October. October results are 1.8 million in receipts, about 1.2, just under 1.2 in expenditures, for a positive month of about $638,000. A year-to-date, we are positive a little over $4 million. So, that's, again, a very good trend, especially coming out of the concerning years we've had as we end up the year. It should be extremely positive, more positive than we really expected or hoped for. Regarding the Gorman Farm, the Sunflower Festival, they sold 18,000 sunflowers at $1 per stem and raised over $120,000, netting a little bit over $100,000 net profit. So, fantastic Sunflower Festival. Certainly, the weather helped with that matter. The Fall Farm Days, which was essentially the rest of October, where you can go out on the weekends, and they raised an additional $9,000. For those who do the save, save the date, this is a little bit out ahead, but we have, row by row, is, will be, next year will be August 24th, and the Sunflower Festival will be October 5th and 6th. Lastly, regarding the farm, those who procrastinate and were hoping to get a turkey this year, they are sold out. Recreation, we had another fantastic Halloween fest. Again, the weather was incredible. We had over 900 residents and guests, so thanks to the rec and F.I.I. for another great evening. The annual turkey shoot will be Friday, November 17th, which is, I guess, this Friday, at 6:00 PM. So, if you haven't signed up yet and are interested, need to get down to the rec and sign up. There's a sign of a two-person, a kid-parent team, then the mom-and-pops division, and then the typical, or the standard, just the kids' shooting. Lastly, just to reiterate what I've been mentioning the last few months, the rec department trying to identify those groups of people that are not perhaps getting as much attention, the rec department has created a, what they call, Impact 57. It's targeting the 5th and 7th graders, a little bit pre-FI. And for those who have kids in that age, please contact the rec if they're interested. Lastly, Service Department, we will have on our agenda tonight an ordinance to re-up with Rumpke, so we're not going to be faced with the switching out of receptacles like we did a few years ago, and we all enjoyed. So, we'll stay with Rumpke, and that's going to go through 2028. Leaf bag program, we've distributed approximately 23,000 bags to 315 households. There are a limited number of bags remaining, so if you still need some, as the leaves are continuing to fall, certainly contact James and the Service Department, and they may be able to get you a few. Lastly, the resurfacing program, we're kind of winding that up. Kingsport, Braywood, Claxton have been resurfaced, Arbor Hill and Gate Club, I think that was pretty much wrapped up last week, finished today, and then they're going to finish up on Cooper, Winnebago, and Ambler to finish out the season's resurfacing. So, I have, Mayor.
You might say that Rumpke went, we signed their contract at 18% increase for the year. That's the problem with no competition. No, nobody.
They were there with only bitter.
Nobody bid against Rumpke. Any other discussion, comments? Police and fire.
Okay. I'm gonna start with the police report, and the first thing we're gonna discuss, I'm gonna ask the police chief to come up and talk about, what I think is a public safety announcement for some candy that's out on the market.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson. The issue that brought to the committee's attention. The issue that brought to the committee's attention.
I fear it's working.
May I speak?
Tim, you can go to best seat, since she is not there.
Yeah.
The issue that I brought up last week to the council committee, there was an incident that happened about two or three weeks ago in Evendale. It was a child that lived in Evendale. He was four years old. He was given what looked like nerd gummy bears. The package looks almost identical to the nerd gummy bears. He was given those by another young child, and a little bit later, while they're at the zoo with an adult, the kids start acting funny. Long story short, they end up taken by squad to Children's Hospital, and he spent two days in Children's Hospital with THC poisoning. These nerd gummies actually had a legal THC compound in them, and you can find them at some gas stations. There is one gas station here in Evendale where I'm gonna go down, talk to the owner, and try and discourage him from continuing to sell those in light of the fact that a two-year-old was hospitalized. But it's good for parents to be aware. We put something up on the Evendale Emergency Services Facebook page with some pictures of it, because these packages look identical to what you might find at the store in the candy aisle, and the real danger with that is with kids. He apparently only had one or two, but if he had gotten this whole package, most four-year-olds with a whole package of gummy bears are gonna eat the entire package of gummy bears if somebody doesn't stop them. So, the situation could have been much worse. And with the, with Issue 2 passing, I suspect that we will see more of this, and that's the reports out of Colorado. They've had a number of childhood THC poisonings that has to do with THC gummy bears, and THC brownies, and THC lollipops, and that kind of stuff. So, the, this stuff is out there. It's legally available now, and will be more so once the Issue 2 legislation takes effect in early December.
Actually, I would strongly recommend not only you going, but as many of us stopping in that station as well.
Yes, it's a marathon at riding in Cooper, so feel free to stop in and tell them how you feel.
And express your feelings. And if the whole community jumps in there, he's gonna feel like he's pushed up against the wall. Any other comments?
Thanks, chief.
You may continue, ma'am.
Okay. And the last time on a police report would be, we have an ordinance on a sale of a cruiser, and this is part of what we talked about in terms of capital purchases, that we found another way, or a way where we think we can some way offset the cost of purchasing additional, when we go to purchase additional cruisers. Okay. Going to the Fire Department, I think we talked about that we received a We Thrive grant for additional, an additional seven AED devices, and they will be installed throughout the village. Some of those stations will be cellular, and some will be wired directly, but I think that's gonna bring our total to 10, once we have those in. So, if you've listened to news or seen some reports, this is becoming an increasing issue of having these devices available should someone have an emergency and need this kind of assistance. Okay. You were talking to me about the doors.
Oh, just the fire, the doors are starting to be installed. You can see it.
Okay, okay. Yes, this is update from the committee meeting, where there are new bay doors going into the Fire Department, and they're starting to be installed now. Also, for capital improvements, just as an FYI, not only to the village but to the other council members, that there was 37,000 remaining in the Fire Department's budget for, capital budget for this year. So, the chief presented us with a list of items. He's gonna prioritize those and look to, to say which ones are gonna be done before the end of the year. And also, there was an update to the workout room in the Fire Department. There was discovering that there was some mold there. It has been mitigated and dealt with. Just wanted to make you aware of that. And we have reached the point now, what we talked about, when we had hiring committee meetings for promotions and hirings in the Fire Departments, because retirements were upcoming, we're almost there. So, that's why we have ordinances on, on the agenda for promotions and hiring of personnel, because some of those retirements are going to occur at a captain's position, at least one in January, and one projected for also in the first quarter. Also, I wanted to mention that there is a hiring committee meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November 28th. It has to do with a new fire marshal's position that we are creating, so that's what, and that wasn't in the minutes, and so I just wanted to mention that. And then, we've done this previously, but kudos to the Fire Department for continuing this. We donated, as we gotten new equipment to outfit our Fire Department, we've donated some of our firefighting gear to nations in Africa who do not have that, so we had eight sets of gear donated to the African Fire Mission. Okay, I think that's fire. Going to the Building Department, there were, excuse me, 19 building permit applications in the month of October. That included an almost $13 million expansion at GE. 22 permits were issued with an estimated construction cost of $2.6 million, and the village took in a little over $28,000 in revenue as, as a result of that. Also, I should mention that Walmart has undergone, they had a $2 million building renovation. That is now complete, and I understand that the ribbon cutting occurred a few weeks ago. So, then, moving on then to cultural arts, wanted to mention that Art Ventures is sold out for this month, but it will be available in December 15th. We'll be going to La Comedia for Miracle on 34th Street. Also, I'm sorry, I lost, I'm losing my voice. I can't pull up the other part of my report, okay. That there is a holiday painting pottery event coming up on Saturday, December 2nd, from 10:00 to 1:00. You need to sign up at the recreation desk to participate in that, and I will say that, as usual, bourbon tasting, sold out, and sparkling wine tasting, sold out. So, not sure quite what that means when you put those two together.
Evendale's not a drink.
Not a drink, okay. And just as a reminder, the jury photo exhibit is still available to be seen out around the fencing from, near the pool area, and it will be up, the plans are now to have it up until November 30th.
Okay, any comments, changes? The only thing that I have is that, remember, December 1st is the swearing-in of the new council and the mayor, 8:00 PM, and we will have available then committee appointments and things like that on December 1st. And I'll be talking to you in the meantime about that. That's the only thing I have tonight. So, let's go directly to the ordinances that we have tonight. We have Resolution 23-07, and I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextrow.
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht.
Yes.
Mr. Footoff.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
A resolution adopting the 2023 Hamilton County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow.
Yes.
Mr. Footoff.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Albrink.
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Albrink.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution as an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Albrink.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
I now declare Resolution 23-07 adopted as an emergency. Next, we have twenty, ordinance 23-61. I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Albrink.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
An ordinance approving the additional appropriation in the general fund to fulfill the payment requirements related to the receipt of the Ohio EMA ARPA retention grant and declare it as an emergency. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Albrink.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
This is the, uh, fire and police are going to receive $4,000 this year, uh, as a retention bonus, and it's paid by the state of Ohio, just so you know what we're voting on. Now may I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Albrink.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Albrink.
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 23-61 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 23-57. I like permission to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Albrink.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ordinance rejecting all bids on the Gorman Heritage Farm Nature Playscape Project and declaring it as an emergency. We didn't get any bids. We didn't get, get any bids. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Albrink.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Albrink.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Now, a motion is needed to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Albrink.
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 23-57 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 23-58. I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Albrink.
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the traffic island landscape maintenance and project and declaring it as an emergency. May I have a motion to, may I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Albrink.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Now may I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Albrink.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Albrink.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Albrink.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Albrink.
Yes.
An ordinance, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Rumke of Ohio, Inc., the lowest and best bidder for the waste and recycling services for a three-year period with two additional optional years, and declare it as an emergency. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Albrink.
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Albrink.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Albrink.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Albrink.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Now I declare ordinance 23-59 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 23-60. I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Albrink.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing the sale of Evendale Police Department's 2014 Ford Explorer to Menethy County, Kentucky, and declaring it as an emergency. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Albrink.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Albrink.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson.
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 23-60 adopted as an emergency. Uh, we will now go to a proclamation.
All right, you want to go down front? For the future. Give you a microphone.
Mayor, you want, you want to use a microphone?
You want to use Jeff's? How appropriate would that be?
I'll use it again.
Right. He never did really use it. He had needs.
Well, tonight, we're saying goodbye to, uh, longtime councilman of the Village of Evendale, Vice Mayor for a lot of years, and pop-up. He knows his friend. Jeff Albrink has been with the village. Well, let me read the citation because it says it all. Whereas Jeffrey Albrink has elected to the village council five times and served 20 years. Whereas Jeffrey Albrink conscientiously and ably served the Village of Evendale as Vice Mayor, President of the Council, Council Member, and President of the Community Improvement Corporation, and also chaired every council committee, including Finance Committee, for the past 12 years, thereby setting an outstanding example of good citizenship and concern for the well-being of the community. And whereas Jeffrey Albrink's leadership was instrumental to the Village of Evendale developing a long-range plan for the rezoning and redevelopment of the Evendale Business District, setting the vision for the Arrow Hub development, and strategically attracting and retaining several businesses, and the addition of several Evendale amenities, including Cultural Arts Center, Gorman Heritage Farm, the Founder's Pavilion, Amphitheater, the Bell Tower Veterans Memorial, and the Bell Tower Arts Pavilion and New Shelter House and Pickleball Courts. And whereas Jeffrey Albrink has been an active resident of the Village of Evendale for 27 years, and has enjoyed golfing, traveling with his family, Cincinnati Sports, and Ohio State Football. And whereas Jeffrey Albrink shares this honor with his wife Natalie, and his three daughters, Emily, Kelsey, and Ashley, son-in-law James, and grandson Michael. So therefore, I, Richard Exifary, Mayor of the Village of Evendale, on behalf of the citizens, employees, and elected officials, do hereby proclaim sincere appreciation to Jeffrey Albrink for his outstanding service to the Village of Evendale for the past 22 years. Testimony thereof, I have affixed my signature, and I might also say, "A good friend." Thank you. A good friend, so.
I really don't know what to say. My family, my family, my wife, my sister, my mother, this character. They got lost somewhere. Really appreciate everything. I really appreciate the support everybody's giving me over the years. All right, even. I really appreciate it. You know, people ask me, you know, what do you do on council? And we're very blessed that we have, you know, the resources and all that. And I, often, and I, I say sincerely, you know, to the different departments that, you know, we enable them and we give them the, the resources to do their job, but, and then we just get out of the way because it's, it's, you know, Evendale's a wonderful community, but it's the department heads. Everybody make it go. We just make sure they have the right stuff. So, thank you, everybody.
Do you have a couple parting gifts for me?
First one's in a box, and it, uh...
Me!
Me! It likes a box. You may need a little help opening it.
He's all right, he's all right.
Give him one.
No, thank you. Probably don't want to give one to one. Village of Evendale, thank you.
And one more thing.
For you, the Village of Evendale.
One more tile that we have made specifically for the Village of Evendale. Sextro has something for you. He's traveling his boots.
The lights bleed? No, but what I was thinking when everybody was coming in, "Mayor, we have more people here than we had at the town meeting." We had to be offering a dinner. But, um, I wanted to say something this evening because Jeff and I, um, we've known each other for 23 years, and we met by moving a ping pong table from my house to his house. And then, as time went on, we started running into each other in the early mornings at the fitness center. That led to coffee, that led to a great friendship. About six years ago, Jeff said, "Would you be ever interested in running for council?" I said, "I'll think about it." Six years later, I'm starting my second term. So thank you. Thank you very much. But just two short stories that shows you the character of Jeff.
These people want to get home.
But you'll, you'll like this story, especially your mother. So, at last year's town meeting, I walked to the front, I put my notebook down and my jacket, put it on my chair, and I walked back out to where the residents were, started speaking with them and this and that. And then I turn around and there's Jeff speaking to this older woman. So as I pass them, Jeff says, "Do you know who this is?" I said, "That's your mother." Complete silence, and I'm thinking to myself, "Oh, my God, not his mom."
Betty Hopper.
So, so, it was so funny. So Betty says, "Son, it's okay." And then Jeff goes, "Mom, don't worry about it." So that, from that day forward, every time they run into each other, Jeff goes, "Hi, Mom." And Betty goes, "Did you know that, Mrs. Albrink, that he has a side mom?" And, uh, one more short story. So Jeff had a minor, I guess it was minor, procedure done, healthcare procedure. Yes, it was minor. And so the hospital wanted him to stay a couple days for observation. So one day I go in to visit him, we have a night visit and this and that. So before I left, I gave him this nicely wrapped gift, and he opened it, and he couldn't believe it. He says, "Gosh, how nice of you." It was a golf club. So as I'm leaving, Jeff goes, "Well, it looks used. It has my name and phone number on it. Is this my club?" I said, "Yes, you left it on the ninth tree ladder." So, these are the stories that develop a great friendship, and I consider Jeff a very good friend. So, um, saying that Jeff will be missed, and just with the people here he very much loved, so, um, I couldn't think of a better parting gift than this right here. So just take, just take the paper out.
Candy. There's a story behind this.
Oh, he said he likes candy, that's why he mentions this. Candy.
A couple of years ago, maybe not even two years ago, we found a candy drawer in an administration building. So Tom and I, before meetings, we'd go in there. I don't think it's called.
Oh, rock.
Jungle bar. So we made a hell of a couple pieces of candy. So now the secret's out of why there was, all the candy was gone on Wednesday mornings. We might have been...
This is worth a council, so Jeff, um, Jeff goes to sit down, and he can't sit down because the pockets are so full. No, but you're a great, you're a great friend, and I had to sit down.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Hey, Jack?
Hey, Jack. I'm Jack Cameron. I worked for the village for 10 years. I'm a member of the government for 2012. Everything in the proclamation was followed. Jeff, he, he, he was there for both residents, never had an issue getting any information out of, I couldn't ask for anything else from a captain. So that's all well and good, but what you need to understand is Jeff and I coached for one year with our youngest daughter, basically. And, um, Jeff was hard to control during games. He's got a competitive streak, so you need to be aware of that. But it was fun to coach with him. He was, he was more the skills builder, which I wasn't. It was a golf club. So as I'm leaving, Jeff goes, "Well, it looks used, it has my name and phone number on it. Is this my club?" I said, "Yes, you left it on the ninth green landing." So these are the stories that develop a great friendship, and I consider Jeff a very good friend. So, um, saying that Jeff will be missed, and just with the people here he very much loved, so I couldn't think of a better parting gift than this right here.
Me!
So just take the paper out.
There's a story behind this.
He said he likes candy, that's why he left this.
Candy.
A couple of years ago, maybe not even two years ago, we found a candy drawer in the administration building. So Tom and I, before meetings, we'd go in there. I don't think it's a bar.
Oh, right.
Jungle bar. So when they had held us up to a couple pieces of candy, so now the secret's out of why all the candy was gone on Wednesday mornings.
This is worth a package, so Jeff, Jeff goes to sit down, and he can't sit down because his pockets are full. No, but you're a great, you're a great friend, and I had to sit down.
Thank you so much, everybody.
They like this?
No.
I like that.
Hey, Jack. So I worked for the village for ten years. I worked for the village for ten years. I've done local government for twenty-five years. Everything in the proclamation was followed. Jeff, he, he was there for the residents, never had an issue getting any information out of them. I couldn't ask for anything else from a captain. So that's all a while ago, but what you need to understand is Jeff and I coached for one year with our youngest daughter, basically. And Jeff was hard to control during games. He's got a competitive streak, so you need to be aware of that. But it was fun to coach with him. He was, he was more the skills builder, which I wasn't. I was more organized and come to practice at this time, did the game at this time. So he was a great help. But we had our final game, and we ended up winning the tournament, which was kind of a nice tournament, but it's because the coaching guy too was so helpful for the girls. But we were playing this last game, and this team had lost in three years. It was a Sharonville team. So I know it was more personal, but we're playing this game. Do you remember this, Ashley? You don't remember this? So maybe. Okay, do you remember it, Jeff?
Exactly.
So the Sharonville team had lost in three years, and they killed everybody all year long, and he did such a good job helping the girls build skills. But during the game, Ashley was our star player. We worked around Ashley, right? And so I was trying to manage enough time for the other girls to get in the game. We laid it on this team, we were ahead by, I think it was nineteen to two at halftime. And in the second half, I started, I pulled Ashley out, like, I gotta get the other girls in, we're ahead by nothing. They score a basket, and Jeff's like, "Thanks to me." What Ashley got you? Do you remember that?
Yeah.
Another basket.
It was a three girls basketball.
I know, it's been six years. It was fun. We ended up winning, but it was just fun to coach with Jeff and see that competitive nature. So, but thank you for your service. I mean, I really appreciate it, employee here at Cerberus. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Really appreciate everybody, you guys coming out. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ken.
Are you next?
Before we adjourn, we have a representative from the Sharonville Library who would just like to say three words.
You want to talk in that microphone down there on the end?
I was gonna put my storage killing voice to.
Well, so they can hear you on the, on the recording. We need you on a microphone, either there or over here, wherever.
Hello, is this working now? Okay. I'm Virginia Stanco, Jenna Stanco to the people that I've worked with a lot. I am the branch supervisor, youth services at the Sharonville Library, and I wanted, I was so pleased that we had such a large turnout today because I wanted to announce that as part of the library's master facility plan, the Sharonville branch closed temporarily for two months for what we call a branch refresh. Sharonville is the branch that serves Sharonville and Evendale mostly. I'm excited to share that we reopened last week on the sixth, and we're happy to welcome our customers back to the refreshed branch. We have added new carpet, paint, and furniture, a new layout with a dedicated space for quiet reading and study, expanded kids' area with larger play space, upgrades in the meeting room, which is heavily used by our community, and parking lot repairs, which were badly needed. Our building is thirty years old, so this is actually our anniversary that we are being reopened on. We'd like to invite you all to join us on Saturday, November eighteenth, at ten AM for our reopening celebration. After opening remarks, families can enjoy customer appreciation activities for all ages, including button making and crafts, face painting, a collaborative community art exhibit, storytimes at eleven, and light refreshments, and more. We thank you for your time, and we hope to see you all there. And I'm going to put flyers that have the schedule of events and an invitation on one of the chairs if you want to grab one going out, so you know what we're doing. We hope to see you all there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the meeting? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Albrecht.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Smithy Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Council's adjourned.[1521.51]